The agenda of April as of May. Motion by...
No, this motion is okay.
This motion is okay.
This motion is okay, we just need to support it.
Motion by bodily support by Chapman, all in favor? I have a motion carried. Except for motion for approval of the minutes of March 11th.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Motion by... Satterby. Support by Clark. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment? Ralph.
First of all, I'd like to thank you again for the approval of the fence. And I also want to apologize. When Sam come up and asked me about the fence, I looked at the fence and I went, "Man, the backstop will do. The rest of the fence is in terrible shape. If we could fix the rest of the fence." Well, then, you start tearing out the old fence and you look at the backstop and you go, "Man, we're spending $11,000 on fence. The backstop looks like heck." Yes, it worked, but it looked terrible. And I should've said it the first time and I apologize. I can promise you there's community support for the backstop. I've had great luck raising... You know, we'd like to... The softball team would like to match the... Split it in half the cost with you. And the community is supporting it really well. A lot of the businesses in town, a lot of them have already gave money to support that. Bill's been hiding from me. Every time I stop, they're just signing the door, "Be back soon." But... But we have had... I have pledges or the money for our half already. And instead of having people come, I think that says... When they actually open their wallets and say, "Yes, we want to support this," I think that's a huge thing. They'll pluck the money immediately. So I know there's community support for it.
Well, I think you've done a good job in helping us too.
Well, we're lucky that we have people that'll work... You know, I mean, we had volunteers. Brad came in. I mean, we had a couple kids... Or a kid on the softball team. And it went really well. And Sam's guys from the village work real hard too.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Susie McGuire. I want to start off with a personal note. The turtle, that is in Thurston Park, very near and dear to my heart. When my dad worked for the village superintendent, he and his two crew members made that turtle. The turtle needs a new paint job. I would like to personally ask the council if my family would be able to do that and repaint the turtle. The turtle turns 47 years old. And I'm... It's very near and dear to my heart. And I just want to know if I can get approval for that. If I can spruce it up.
That'd be a good idea. Not a good idea. You go right ahead, please.
Okay, and my next note. I'm president of the Central Lake Chamber of Commerce, which is another... It's very near and dear to my heart too. I want to give kudos and thank you to Sam and his crew for all the help that they have given us. Whatever we've asked, they dropped everything. The other thing is to the Central Lake Police Department. Scott, you've been wonderful. And Rod, we really appreciated your positive comment on our webpage about the events that we were putting on. I mean, it just... It just made us very happy. For years, the Central Lake Chamber of Commerce has been the core of the community for bringing events to the community, into our village and into our township. Our events are not moneymakers. We do not make any money off of these events at all. We contribute back to the community with our sponsored events. Our annual budget consists of donations, our membership drives, and our sponsored events that we put on. We spend between... And our budget is between $10,000 and $15,000 a year. That money is brought in by our membership and that. What the money goes out to is different events that we put on. The fireworks alone cost us $10,000. And with the help of the township, they pay for the porta potties. And they... They're the writer for the insurance on this. Every year, the Central Lake Chamber has given a $1,000 scholarship to a graduating senior. Number two, June 8th of this year is our car cruise-in. We've already started receiving money for this event and we're looking forward to another successful event. Fourth of July brings in thousands and thousands of people. With this, these people stay in Central Lake. They shop in Central Lake. They stay at the park. They stay at all the lodging facilities. They buy their food. They go to the local stores and get souvenirs. July 3rd is our annual boat parade. We started that new event last year. We had a few. This year, we've got more people that are interested in it. July 4th is, again, is our big celebration. We start off... We work closely with the local churches and organizations that put on events. And on July 27th is new this year. And what that is, is that's our first annual outdoor festival. It's going to be held at Thurston Park. Last year, in April, almost a year ago, Mr. Cruzey and Mr. Bodley came forward before a change of meeting and asked... I had just taken over. Asked if we could have more events down at Thurston Park. We said yes. What can we do? So we started last year having events down there. Our first one was our All-American picnic. We had over 200 people attend that. And we... It was wonderful. We have a live band. We have... We want to keep things growing here in the community. September is our fall dinner and our silent auction. Novembers are in the Central Lake pageant. Those girls that ride that float all summer and support Central Lake, they end up with the $1,500 in money scholarships that they use. They are given that every fall to support us. December is our annual winter night. Last year, and that's always a big hit. Last year, the lioness called me and said, "Susie, what can we do with our craft show this year? We want to get more people in." I said, "Bring in some vendors. How much space do you have?" She says, "Can you help us out?" And I said, "Yeah, sure." We posted in our Facebook page. Within an hour, the spaces were filled. We received a very nice thank you card from Ralph, thanking us for their support to help out their local group. And then January, February, March is our annual membership drive. All of our advertising is through the members and the businesses and organizations and churches. We advertise on our webpage and we also advertise in our visitor's guide. All of us on the Central Lake Board are volunteers. Not one of us make a penny. We volunteer many, many hours to get us to grow. Each chairperson, and I started this last year, people come up with a idea. I say, "You're the chairperson of that event." They report back to us. We work... They have a budget and we all have to work off of that budget. I receive calls from carnivals, dog and pony shows, circuses, and you name it, and they call. And they say, "We want to bring a circus to town. We want to bring a carnival to town." I'll contact either the Lions or the Lioness or VFW or some other organization to say, "What do you guys think about that?" And they say, "What's in it for us?" These people come in, reap the money, and leave. None of that money stays here in this community. And that's what we strive to have done, is that this money stays here. Last year, had our car cruise-in and there could be maybe, I don't know, it didn't get passed forward or what happened. But I was told that if there are no public restrooms, and I'm a big advocate of public restrooms uptown, is that the village's responsibility is to supply porta potties. Now, they've done it in the past. And I would appreciate if somebody looks into that since there's no public facilities uptown. So the chamber went on ahead and we paid $350 for the porta potties. And I'm asking that the village reimburse us for that so that we can... We already have some seed money to grow on. But I have the bill. The bill somehow got sent here and didn't get paid. They contacted us. I said, "We'll just pay it and I'll deal with it later." So I do have the bill. We had a total of 65 cars registered. And I'm going to hit on this car show. We had 65 vehicles registered last year. We charged $5. We took in, plus our donations that people donated, and said, "Here, just take this. Take this money." We took in $1,275 on our show. We had expenses of $889. And that was the trophies, advertising, the door prizes. And we do not go and hit up the businesses for this. If the businesses want to step up to the plate and donate, that's great. We take all donations. So our car cruise balance was $385.75. And that was paying for the porta potties. The reason the information... I'm giving you this information. I just want to clarify so everyone understands what the Central Lake Chamber is all about. Central Lake Chamber always gave the previous car person that wanted to have the event in town $1,500 for startup money. No money was ever returned to us. We never made a penny on it. Our concern is it might have been a wonderful car show, but nothing came back into the community. On December 15th of this year, I received a phone call. I received an email. Regarding a few members of the village was having a meeting with the previous car show person. I will admit, my feathers got ruffled and they got ruffled mad. I thought, "How dare this happen? Me, as the president of the Central Lake Chamber, not know about it? Not one chamber person was aware of it. Nor was any of the committee or the chairperson committee aware of it." It was a very, very sad situation. On this email I received, it said they wanted to have some board of directors. "Mr. Cruzey, you would be my number one chairperson on this. You'd be my number one tip." No further communication would even be mentioned about the chamber. They are moot point. Elected by no one, and it's yesterday's news. They don't have faith in the community or have any say in this matter. Since I pointed out to the community just how useless the Central Lake Chamber really is. The chamber, their spouses, and friends are all a lost cause. That ruffled a few more feathers with some of the chamber officers and the board of directors. The chamber did their September show, virtually no spectators, which we had spectators. I can't believe if they have... If they'll even get 30 cars this year if they choose to have another show. I think they had 50 or so. We had 65. We threw it together very, very fast. For $5 to see at this show, that's basically what the type of car you would see. The newspaper most likely won't give us any help either. I still need $15,000 to have this show. We had positive comments from our cruise-in. Plans were underway to have another annual event. We wondered... I called three people on our board and yes, maybe it snowballed. People got concerned. The community wanted to pull together, obviously, in support of the chamber. How long had this been planned? Why was no one... None of us notified? And why could no one work together? We have no idea. We have none whatsoever. Money was already being raised for this year's car show. The chairpeople, Andy and Marcy Parker, said, "What do we do now? We have this money." I said, "Hang on to it. We're still going to have a car show." On December 15th, I called Mr. Cruzey, our concerns, and I just... I felt that it landed on deaf ears. I really did. Nothing. I never heard back after our phone calls. I never heard back anything. I thought, "Maybe after they have this meeting, I will hear back." I never heard anything. The Central Lake Chamber posts our events a year every beginning of January. We said, "We're having it. We're moving ahead. We don't care what the outcome is. We are planning this." Mr. Cruzey sent me a message, a very angry message. He says, "I'm so angry, I had to put this into words." I had to read it three times. I had to read it three times. I thought, "Why can you not pick up the phone and call me? Why?" "How can the chamber rally with the group who are upset with the previous car show planner? I will never understand it. Shame on you and the chamber. You united a campaign against him." "No, I didn't do it. The chamber didn't unite it." "He had united a campaign against him previous by different businesses and organizations." "You told me to keep my eyes wide open and my eyes have been wide open. I've sat back. I've watched. I've listened. I love this community and I grew up in this community and I graduated from this high school. And I'm very proud of this community. I don't like seeing this community torn apart. It's the chamber's responsibility to get these events to town, to work with the local businesses, not the village." I asked the board of directors. I said, "What do you guys want to do again? Second time?" Their responses? "We can't figure this out. What's the village doing? Why do they want to put on events in town? Don't they have enough to do with the streets department and working with that and the parks? Was any of the other council members? Were they informed at this meeting? What was happening and what was going on? None of us knew." We couldn't sit back and wait. We had to move ahead. We have an open door policy, the Central Lake Chamber does, with all the members, the businesses, and organizations. My personal phone number is listed. I receive all sorts of calls, positive, negative, whatever we want. We're available. Just talk to us. Communicate with us. Throw your ideas out at us. As president, I'm here to represent to state communication is utmost important. Board stated they weren't aware. None of its members were aware. And they have asked that either get on board, support us, and work with us or else the chamber can be dissolved and the village can put up the money and run all the events. It's that simple. We don't make a dime off of this. We don't make any money. We're not reimbursed. My husband and I purchased the sweatshirts out of our own personal money last year for the volunteers that helped with our car show that we put on our cruise-in. We want to keep the money here in the community. We want our local businesses to grow and we want everybody to be happy and get along. Now, my next question. I called here in January. I asked about reserving Thurston Park. I was told I had to wait till the end of April. We have to plan these events. We can't wait till May or... We have to get word out there. We have a lot of stuff going on and I don't know who to go to. Who do we go to to make our reservations for Thurston Park, which Mr. Cruzey and Mr. Bodley wanted us to take back to Thurston Park and bring on some events? Who's the contact person? We don't know. We don't know. I made a phone call, talked to Pat Marshall. Very nice, very pleasant. She said, "Susie, you'll have to wait till the end of April." I know Lyle real well, but I don't know how to get a hold of Lyle. So my question now is, grow with us. Just grow with us. Don't grow against us. We want to be the core. We want to work with the local organizations. We want to help build this community. Would any... Have any one of you volunteered or would any one of you guys step up to the plate and give us five or 10 hours of volunteerism? We really would appreciate it. I just want to say, "Thank you." Thanks Denise. I want to say, "Thank you." Rod, your comment was very positive. A lot of chamber members said, "Hey, he's a council member. He says it looks like we're going to have a fun time in Central Lake this year." That's our goal. That's our mission. Thank you for that. So if anybody can step up to the plate, we sure would appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Scott, police report.
Thank you. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to look over the report. Pretty typical. It's starting to pick up a little bit from the previous month, so which is good. It's a good kind of busy, I tell people. Just some extra time spent on enforcement as far as traffic and stuff like that. We attended annual training in this last month. It was a legal update. With Sam's help, which actually, most of Sam's work, a little bit of my help, we got the Explorer fixed. Had some brake problems and stuff like that. We also have the Crown Vic, which is the patrol car. That's all ready to rock and roll. We got tires painted and some new tires and stuff like that put on it. So our goal is, if it ever stops snowing, we're going to switch cars and utilize this patrol car versus the four-wheel drive. And beside that, everything else is kind of right on par. One of the other things I didn't list on here, which I kind of finished up today, we finished up the background phase or actually, all the background stuff for the common areas caretaker position. And that's all ready to go. And I've had a one-on-one conversation with Joe, Ken, and Bill as far as what it involved and stuff like that. So I'm sure Joe will explain a little bit more about it if there's any questions or anything like that. You can feel free to contact me afterwards too, so.
Any questions? Scott?
Thank you. Everybody should have a copy of DPDW. Very typical month for March. The very first one, you'll see where it says CCR. That's Consumer Confidence Report. Been published in Review. Been sent off to DQ for approval. Northern County Road Commission, the snow bid is that $2,500 we received from the county for getting the snow off the shoulders of the road down through the downtown district. That's usually sent in by the first... Has to be in by the last day of April, but this year, we got fortunate. We could send it in, I think, the 15th of March because we had already met as much as they were going to give us back. So I just went ahead and got that done. And that has been received in our... Payhead for it. Overtime comes at 12 hours. And that was the snow we got in the first part of March. The water main break. And we're going to start getting real busy here with spring coming. Any questions?
You've already started tearing up the softball field.
It's completely over. Yep, it's all over.
How soon before it can start putting back up?
It's going in as we speak. There's public service in this truck.
Who's going to do it? Wow, you're right involved there.
No questions?
Thank you.
I have a few here. First one is from Northern Lakes Economic Alliance on the DDA. I just got this today. It says, "I finally got through to the office of the great seal of the Michigan Secretary of State. They will record the establishment of the DDA once they receive a copy of the ordinance adopting the DDA for 1992. And we'll wrap the cover letter with an explanation for their request and direct them to send the acknowledgement to the village office." And the cover letter is, "The Village of Central Lake has requested Northern Lakes Economic Alliance to assist with documenting and establishment of their local downtown development authority in accordance with Act 197 of 1975. The code was copied from the ordinance and was approved by the village clerk in 1992. Upon recording this ordinance with the office of the great seal, please send acknowledgement to the Village of Central Lake." So we're just waiting to have the seal. The second one is to the council. "Friday, May 3rd, 2013, Northern Lakes Economic Alliance is having their annual luncheon. I received this today. So I spoke with Dan Eves, who's talking about the township and the village, going together to reserve a table. Seats eight for $200 for the luncheon on Friday, May 3rd. He's checking with council and community members to see who is interested. If you could do the same, I appreciate it and will follow up in a week or so to see how many of those representatives would like to attend." Talk about that at a later time. If anybody is interested or maybe some chamber members, they just... They'd like to... Community support on it. So they support us a lot and we should really consider it. It is in northern Michigan. Odawa Casino Kotaske.
Oh, wow, my old mate.
We will continue to work on that. Here is a letter from Barb. I will probably get the name wrong.
Checkter.
Checkter? Back there?
That's me.
Oh, okay. It says, "We are looking at offering classes on Tuesday and Thursday mornings and would like the use of the pavilion from 8:30 to 11:30. At this time, we have six adults planning. When we have a place, we'll be able to finalize our plans. The adult will be volunteers and there will be no cost for the youth. We want to offer a variety of arts crafts, though we have no set schedule yet and will be asking for donations for materials. At this time, the members of the... Are myself, Melissa Zalinek, Teresa Schaefer, Mariah Armstrong, Darlene Kendall, and Tressa Potter." We have an article. "We have an article in the next issue of the Central Lake News asking for input from parents and other community members who may be interested. Please let me know if we need any more information." So I don't... So I see no problem with it. I mean, I don't know where the council needs to go with that. It's just absolutely fine.
It was just kind of a reservation of the space, you know, at the pavilion.
How long?
Two days. Two days a week, is that, for four hours a day?
Two hours a day, two days a week for... I think it was one of the ones for five. Like, end of June when school is out until the end of July. And then July 4th is in there, so we're going to offer. I think it ended up being 10 days. From 9:30 to... Like, from 9:00 to 11:00 or 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning.
And what days of the week?
Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday, from 8:30 to 11:30.
Okay, that's definitely it.
It shouldn't be. We discussed it.
And we know we're flexible. We just wanted to offer arts and crafts to the kids like some of us have when we were kids. And when we say donations, we mean like used. Like, if you have woolly yarn around and, you know... I mean, we're not going to ask for or ask them for money or anything, but just if people have things they want to donate. It's just going to be simple arts and crafts and just, you know, different creative things for the kids to get involved in in the summertime.
I see. So we just make sure it's on the schedule so we realize that there's people there in those hours. in those hours.
Outside of senior graduation, I don't even see it being a problem.
Yeah, something came up like you said.
Maybe at family reunions. Those are usually weekends.
Right, and in the mornings and if someone really needed it, we could.
That's not a problem.
I take it, I think it's a great idea. Anyway, she can.
Yeah, the bathrooms will be open and cleaned and we'll change their days, like you said, Tuesday and Thursday.
And we wouldn't need the kitchen facilities or anything.
Not in your campground thing?
Site number 73.
There's a possibility for that. It actually has pavilion rental built into it if we want to use it. We just haven't, at this time, be in the beginning stages of that. We haven't necessarily opted to go that far, but it is as simple as what it is.
I, I just have a question on that, the pavilion in Thurston Park. So we have planned some events down there, but they're like on a Saturday. So my question is, and we've already advertised this, so where's our next step? Is, is, who do we contact or who do we say we, we have these dates, who's the person?
Joan, I actually talked quite a bit about that. Because we, we, we have to get something in place.
We need a calendar.
We really truly don't.
You're absolutely right, and we were just discussing.
There needs to be, in my opinion, something in place so that you know, that we know, so that Scott knows, so they're all on the same page. And we just need to come up with what that is. We talked about it quite a bit one day, we know we need to address.
Well, if she's got, if she's got dates that she has to have set up in January, we've got to get that ahead because we've also got graduations that go down to the park also. So those have to be set up before anything else comes up. That's more important than anything other dates.
Well, they're not using it in January.
We power events in the summer.
Yeah, we definitely get something in place with that. It may be very, we'll see how our, our reservation system for our campground is going to work out. It may go into that if it's a good viable option for that.
Okay, because we're getting a lot of calls right now for this Anchemount Door Fest that Bill Truscott is putting on. And it's like, people are asking lodging, they're asking this, they're asking that, and we've got to, you know.
We have the dates already that you need.
Yes, I do. Yes. Me, I do, do you?
I, I, well, you know, there were, actually, I do, and there's no, somewhere.
We, we also discussed the, the issue of if there was something else going on or somebody rented it for that morning and, and this art class wanted to use it. There's an option that may be available to us of going into the Lions Pavilion also in the sense there is two pavilions there. We could maybe look at doing something so we're not overbooking or running out of room or whatever.
I can get these dates too, yeah. So we can get them scheduled.
Are, are that the same dates that you had in your email?
Yeah.
Okay, we got it.
And they all, did I put all of them in there like this? I have, well, they're all right, you know, I'll just double check it.
I'm working on something, the calendar made up that we can.
I have a suggestion for Joe in regards to getting a calendar set up. Has he turned Google Calendar? Then all of you can be on one page at the same time.
Maybe some type of dry erase or one until the computer program gets kicked in. Probably do some type of dry erase or one until the computer one gets kicked in.
Yeah.
Just kick it in the clerks' office. Kind of like the township does.
The, the problem with the reservation system, in my opinion, is going to be the fact that it's a reservation. And when we're, when we're using, when we're using it for volunteer stuff and donations, that's going to be harder to try to work into that system.
I think it's as simple as we get a form filled up, Susie says we'd like it this day, we say, "Okay, it's on the calendar," we pass it on to Scott, he knows about it, and we move on to the next event.
Yeah. Instead of overthinking it?
Yeah.
Exactly.
We just will come up with a, Scott would be glad to do that one.
Do what?
Thank you, Scott, and we appreciate that.
Don't worry, we'll all take care of this. I have one more correspondence I'll read and we can move on. This was from Brad. It was to Ken Cruzey and Denise Batterby, sending us people separating. I told him I'd bring it to the council if we want to respond to it in any way. I'm writing an article for the Central Lake News about the village FOIA policy. As I promised, I will always give you the chance to tell your side of the story. This is what I have so far. Even if you are not interested or inclined, you may wish to read carefully. The village FOIA policy seems to be, all requested material must be submitted to the FOIA coordinator through the village office as per the village's website. I asked for clarification in March meeting, if all materials are considered a FOIA request, can reply, anything requested from the village is a FOIA request. If my representation of this policy is incorrect, please let me know. A couple weeks ago after that meeting, I contacted Pat for a cap fee of the revenue expenditure in the peddlers' order. Why did she not require me to fill out a FOIA form? Is the policy under review? The Central Lake News contacted several governments in the area to say if they had a similar policy. None did. All the clerks we contacted said that it is rare for them to require a FOIA request for anything, and when they do, it is typically for older documents. In 2009, the Kotaske News Review contacted every government in Charlevoix and Emmett Counties to request Form F-65 to test compliance with Michigan's Open Record Law. Every government provided the form without requiring a FOIA request. The Village of Central Lake's policy seems to be unique in that area. We understand the need for a single point of contact for information. We also understand the need to log requests and distribution. But why is the Village of Central Lake the only community we could find that requires all information to go through FOIA? We also contacted Robin Luus-Herman, General Counsel for the Michigan Press Association. Robin was referred to us as one of the leading experts in the state on FOIA. She stated that all information is not covered under FOIA. Under the Michigan Constitution, which predate, which predate FOIA, there is a right to access some financial information. Moreover, under the Open Meetings Act, if a newspaper provides a written request for a copy of public notices, they must be provided free of charge. So if this policy of requiring FOIA for all requests is followed to the letter, would the village not be in violation of other laws? Ms. Luus-Herman also states, FOIA expressly allows, expressly allows for certain fees to be waived. Some public bodies have a policy of waiving anything under a certain amount or under a certain period of time it takes to retrieve them. So if the CL Village policy seems to suggest they're going to charge everybody every time, where FOIA makes them consider not charging, so I find that problematic. She also expressed concern with village compliance given the limited hours our clerk is in office. A FOIA request must be responded to within five days, else it'd be considered a refusal. Our clerk is only in the office three days a week. Would it not be better to just log information requests but not require FOIA, which removes the risk of liability problems should you not respond within five days? Concerning the fees, Luus-Herman stated that the clerk's time and the paper used for copies have already been paid for by the taxpayers, so charging people for information is a double charge. Finally, she stated, "I might want to encourage them to put pen and paper and explain their policy and post it on their website so citizens understand how to go about getting that information. Before concluding, I encourage my clients, reporters, and editors to engage in a dialogue with their local public officials and employees to discuss the information. That cooperative relationship benefits everybody. This is an attempt at engaging in that dialogue. We would appreciate any comment on any of these issues we have brought forward. Thank you." So I fully agree to the council because the Village of Central Lake does FOIA 100% correctly. And we get advice from our attorney. There, there are things in there that are absolutely incorrect and I'm truly not going to consider council meeting a debate. So if anybody feels this village violates FOIA in any way at the council or anybody in the public, I guess now's the time to say it because we abide by FOIA. FOIA is simply, gives the public a right to request information from the village and demands that we respond within five business days. So to, to put the perception out there that the village is hiding behind something under FOIA is, is, is not correct. FOIA is there to protect you, to get you information. I don't know of any, any time we have ever not abided by FOIA and given people the information. The fact that we're not allowed to charge because it's, it's already paid for is absolutely incorrect. That has, that's, that's been through the courts, I have the state statutes on it, Brad, and I have Brian Graham backing, who's our attorney, who brings a lot more, well, than somebody from the Michigan Press Association. So like I said, I could read you the state statute, but I'm sure arguing it, okay? And through the court system, we can waive fees if we choose, we have the right to collect fees, it sets the policy for how to establish those fees. We've done it, we've set the rates. We charge for FOIA because number one, it is not right to expect all the citizens of the village to pay for information they'll receive. And, and to, to give to some and not others is wrong. So I mean, how do you make a better policy than if you want it, you pay for it, it's 10 cents a page, it is. I mean, I, I think we've been very fair in it. We've had trouble before stating we're not responding to FOIA, so we decided as a village, we will just simply document it. I mean, if you send an email request, that's a FOIA request, that's documentation. So, I mean, I, I hope you don't get the impression we're trying to hide behind something or doing something wrong, is what I'm saying. And if we do, we're, we're willing to address it and discuss it. I just, I didn't want to respond to that outside of the council because I thought it was a council matter.
May I speak for just a minute? I'll be brief because Michigan's playing tonight and I want to...
Absolutely. All of them know by night, continue.
Yes. I'm not saying you guys are doing anything wrong with FOIA. We're not saying that at all. The attorney we spoke with is the leading expert, she was referred to us as the leading expert in the state on these issues. We are not saying that you can't charge us for anything. You can't charge if we demonstrate that we can't pay or that we're financially strapped.
You have to prove indigestion.
Yeah. Right.
And then you only get the first $20.
Right. Right. But what we are saying is if you follow FOIA to the letter, then a newspaper requests by writing, an email is considered a request by writing, at least as far as they're concerned. And you charge them for it, if they request them writing a public notice, for example, and you charge them for it, then you are in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
If they request that at the time the notice is released for the paper, you can't come a month later and request it.
Not saying that.
So we would release it to any paper that wants it. If your paper wants to request a public notice from us and you're going to put it in the paper for free, you'll get it.
That's not where...
You know what I'm saying? We, we, we've never even had that issue, so.
That's not what your policy states.
What does our policy state? Our policy states we abide by FOIA.
You don't have any, there's nowhere, anywhere that there's a policy stated other than, everything goes through FOIA.
Well, I, I don't, I guess what, what is your perception of what FOIA is? FOIA is you make a request for information, we give it to you by FOIA's laws.
Yes, that's understandable. But FOIA doesn't cover every piece of information. Other pieces, like those public notices, are covered under the Open Meetings Act. So as I said, if you charge, if you go through FOIA and you charge somebody for one of those public notices, which is what your policy says right now, then you are in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Well, to, I, I don't even know where you're going with that one, Brad. I honestly don't remember the council about it. I, I have no idea where that's going. But you're going to all of a sudden jump to the fact that we're going to charge somebody for something and you can't have the Open Meetings Act. I mean, that's, I don't know, but I don't think we're getting that one.
No.
You got any other concerns? I'm going to let you go. Think I've got any one? Thank you. Committee reports. Rob Tyler isn't here and I have a report he so graciously typed up for us. Here is my report for the council. DPW has started to grind out the old white crosswalks and replace them with the durable, highly reflective ones, which, I just delayed that part. They, they will be, we're going to...
I ain't done that one.
We're going to make them look a lot nicer, that's right. We're going to grind down, put, put beads in them at the crosswalks, so. Two, we met with Consumers Power to discuss replacing all 104 of the current overhead, overhead street lights with lower wattage LED ones. The lower wattage bulbs will save money without sacrificing the brightness lumens. Before this kind of occur, consumers have to do an energy audit of the current bulbs to more accurately determine the savings that will occur from the changeover. We cannot move forward without this energy audit, so that's in the process. Shaver lamps and bulbs is sending us a trial replacement bulb to one of our street lamps. We will install the new bulb so everyone can evaluate the effectiveness of the new bulb. Replacement bulbs will use less energy and not sacrifice brightness. It should also produce more downlight and less uplight. Exact location of the trial light is yet to be determined. Rob Tyler. And if you have some more information, I won't, or we would just correspond with this law back and forth with them, so. That is being pursued. And that's all Rob has. Rob, see your water.
Sam touched on the six-inch water main and the repaired, water tests are put in, reformed, and they came back, I think, fine. He had to rebuild two sewer pumps and the sewer report was submitted to the DQ. Other than that, it was, you know.
You're up. Bill, what?
We have our new, Harry Josh Jones is on board. He's out and working well. He's pulled a few shifts already and absolutely no problems. The man's been here before, you notice that? That was routine.
He's a good kid.
Very confident. That's all I have.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Denise?
Nothing.
Questions? Thank you.
It's just starting on the new budget. We haven't had a lot going on with the budget per se, but we've had a lot of other things. Working in the Thurston Park area, Ron Nelson Field and the different aspects there, things are moving along good. With Pat's retiring, we're working on replacing her and getting the applications and going through that, so, but there's nothing pressing to really get into too much with that.
Any questions? Thanks, Joe. Leland, Park?
Okay, we're, we have applied for a grant to do some improvements down the park and we're working on that and, that's in the process, so you'll find a bit, if we do get it, you're going to find tremendous change in the park. It's going to be approved a great deal. And we're doing our best towards that. Of course, they already stated, they've already pulled the fencing on the park, ballpark, so. Time will tell how fast we can get things done. It, it's a slow process, you know that, so. But there'll be improvements this year, definitely, hopefully. Thank you.
President's report?
Leland just covered both mine, the fence and the grant, the fence is going on. Like you said, the grant, the grant has been, Brad, Brad put a very nice article in the paper explaining the grant and the process to people, so, thank you, Brad. So I think, hopefully everybody understands, it's a slow process. When we know, you'll know. Hopefully, we get it. If not, we all gave it our best shot, so we, I hope it works. And the ballpark fence, depends on the weather. Yeah, I mean, it's literally, they, they hope to get the hose set today, they didn't because of the rain. One more day, they stretch the fence, backstop, so if the weather cooperates, we'll see a nice new ballpark fence. It's time for Ralph to play ball in the snow.
I got one comment.
Yes.
When I come in to the meeting tonight, I see the wind come out of the east. I've never seen it. I believe we lost two of the docks already over the sideline from the ice, pushing it right out.
Oh, we want to work on it anyway, right? I noticed it when I come in. It's all over on the west side of the pond.
Now, I've never seen that ice shove to the west side of intermediate lake. We don't know yet. I'm just telling you, there's ice piled up over top of them and generally, when the ice pushes, they're gone if it's wet.
I was down there earlier and actually looked in, in the one that had been sunk in, was underneath far enough to hold that water.
When I went home, there was no ice on the west side. When I come in for this meeting, the whole lake had shifted. So just so you guys are aware of that.
So at least the weather's cooperating. Thank you. I have nothing else to give to action items. I have accepted a motion for approval of bills prepaid in the amount of $705.38, payroll in the amount of $4,893.90, payables in the amount of $23,469.90, for a total approved amount of $29,069.18. I'm going to make the motion. Motion by, Chadman's support right there. Any questions? You'll call, Pat?
Batterby?
Yes.
Bodling?
Yes.
Chatlin?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Thayer?
Yes.
Cruzey?
Yes.
Tyler absent.
Motion approved. Any new business? I have nothing myself. We move on to action items. First one being Northern Lakes Economic Alliance members dues.
I'll sit here alone with a few others, I think, who will apologize to Northern Lakes, because I honestly thought we were truly members of Northern Lakes, but at a meeting we had with them, we found out we have never truly paid dues to Northern Lakes, even though we're treated as a member. That's their policy, so I received this letter from them, so I could read it to you. "Thank you for taking time to meet with me and Sarah Christensen earlier this month. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss our mission and the partnerships that exist to assist businesses and communities in our region. Please consider this letter a budget request for the Village of Central Lake to become a member and annual financial supporter of Northern Lakes Economic Alliance. The Northern Lakes Economic Alliance is a nonprofit economic development organization. By design, our four-member counties, Antrim, Charlevois, Chabougan, and Emmett, provide a little less than fifty percent of our funding. The rest is made up of memberships and support from cities, villages, townships, private sector companies, and other various partnerships. This method has really proven to be a good approach, allowing everyone to share in the talented staff the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance is attracted. It all works when everyone is part of the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance. Towards that end, we ask the Village of Central Lake to consider an annual investment in the amount of one thousand eight hundred dollars. This amount is based on a formula tied to the taxable value of the village. We appreciate the strong working relationship the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance has with the Village of Central Lake and look forward to an exciting future. Your investment helps ensure the economic growth of Northern Michigan. Sincerely, Andy Hayes, President." So all I have to say is Northern Lakes Economic Alliance is a great organization, and has been a huge help to the village, and I felt that when they told me we hadn't been paying, so I promised them we would, so I hope I have you support. They've just been, anything, the first place I go, you can ask Cory, we were working on the DDA, the first place I go is Northern Lakes, and never once have they ever even stumbled, other than saying, "We'll do everything we can to help them." We helped them with grants. They're just a huge resource for information, so don't buy the cow for getting milk for free.
Oh, Ralph.
You've got to feed the cow.
Yeah, I couldn't help it. How many comments I can add? So I, and I'm sure maybe Joe could affirm this, but the budget will absolutely absorb the eighteen hundred dollars that we didn't expect, so I have accepted a motion to approve paying Northern Lakes Economic Alliance one thousand eight hundred dollars.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Clark, support by Bodling. Any other discussion? Pat, roll call please.
Bodling?
Yes.
Batterby?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Thayer?
Yes.
Cruzy?
Yes.
Tyler absent.
Thank you. Motion passed. They will be happy. Second item is approving insurance. As always, insurance went up. It wasn't a shock, but it went up, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about seventeen percent or so. So what we felt was fair was to go back and look what we had budgeted, because to me, I felt that was a promise we had made to our employees at budget time. We set their pay, we promised our insurance, so we also now agree that we would work within that amount and not exceed it, because we already passed the budget and approved it. We took three different plans, as I said, Sam and Kathy Pad put together. We just took them to employees and said, "Look them over, ask questions, discuss them." As a group, pick the one you want. They came up with a plan that increases their deductibles from twelve hundred, twenty-four hundred to two thousand, four thousand. The savings and premium was enough that for this year, the village can offset that amount by a higher contribution into their HSA. They're happy with it. We're happy with it, because it stays within our budget, and we all know that next year, we'll discuss it again, but we know it's just going to keep continuing to get worse. So at budget time, it will be an issue. We know it, Sam knows it, Scott knows it, everybody knows it, it's not going to be a surprise, but we all feel this is the best way to get through this year. If anybody has any questions, I would appreciate any more than happy, or Joe would answer. I truly don't even open an action item, because we're not spending any more money, it's already been approved, but so I'm just asking.
So does this include, um...
Rob just...
Leave their...
Nothing, yeah. We get the round X number of dollars for you if you put this in the insurance.
Thank you. Okay.
Pat, just any reason we can make a vote or anything on this? This is just for informational, we put it under action maybe by mistake, did I do it? Because money's budgeted, it's not spent. I just want everybody to see it, any questions? If not...
So it's already been approved?
Yeah, we would just pass them on to Kathy Pad.
Okay. Just information, correct.
Thank you. The third item is, as Ralph told us, and Ralph doesn't need anything...
And Sam. Sam overlooked this.
We all overlooked it, so there's no blame to be passed anywhere. It was just, like I said, you know, had we looked at this before, we'd have approved the amount, compared the whole thing down. If we would have given the money that we had from all of you, we would have said, "Sure." We didn't, in hindsight, we should. So what we are asking for is approval to spend another sixteen hundred dollars. The true cost is thirty-two. Ralph has got sponsors to school the ball to ever to touch the other sixteen hundred dollars, so the village is getting a hundred percent of that money.
I'll make that motion right off that.
Which is huge, so I'm asking for a motion to approve sixteen hundred dollars more for the fence project.
You got it.
Motion by Clark, support by Thayer. Any more discussion? Any questions? I like the way we did this, we saved the money. We don't worry about the towel getting... So, Pat, roll call please.
Thayer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Bodling?
Yes.
Batterby?
Yes.
Cruzy?
Yes.
Tyler absent.
So, thank you guys. Thank you. We're happy.
I went up there and walked all around it yesterday. The fence around there with the fact that it actually congregates the...
It's going to be the nicest feeling, it really will, it looks really good. And we got to, Cap came in today, so when the fence is up, we can put the cap right on.
We'll be able to get more games up there.
I think, the way I understand it, we got the district tournament this year, so it's the first time in, I don't know how many years that's been, so I think, I mean, remember, don't hold me under the gun if we don't, but I think we have. We're hoping.
Well, I don't know.
Thank you, guys. I've got a little from here, so... The next thing I'd like to do, and it might be a little out of order, but I hope we know the deck, is to discuss all business before public comment, because we discussed Jan Deat, it's just nice to have public comment at the end of all our discussions, so if no way of Jack, I'd like to go do the whole business, or we don't have to public comment. The first business is campground support. Campground support contract?
Yep. We tabled that, we tabled that last month, doing the other contracts, waiting on getting the reservation system up and running. We got some word back from Tyler Duffy, and we should have our demo of our campground reservation system this week, or the beginning of next week, so it's time that we'll go ahead and get this done, so Cory can move forward with just getting the reservation system up and running, once it comes down.
Question on that, is there a backup system for this?
Well, actually, this year is a different thing. We've got, we've got, yeah. For the reservation system? Cory can answer that a little more, because when we looked into it, it wasn't actually like a backup, but...
It is backed up at their end, and it's a really good question. I will talk to them about what their data disaster recovery plans are, because if that does go down, do they have a live backup? Which I'm sure they do, but I'll double check that.
They must have some kind of server ready at their facility.
Yeah, well, I think it's worked on Amazon Cloud, and so that's all redundant stuff anyway.
I knew that before it happened, so...
Yeah, well, I'll check into it first thing tomorrow.
See Lyle, he'll be here next week.
The reservation system done, based on the trials.
Twelve seventy for the first year. I'm sure it's just...
No, this is just... Four, you don't have to be keeping that. I remember it. Is there a football scene that lasts? Maybe you could just tell me exactly what our dollar amounts are.
Yeah, basically, it's a one-year contract for the campground support, which will be the reservation system and training, helping Lyle get up and dig and run. The cost of that for the first year is twelve hundred dollars, or actually, I'll double look at that one, yeah, is one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, with sequential years running five hundred and seventy dollars after that. The initial, first year of setup cost is what our annual cost is there.
It's big charge.
Actually, no, this is through Michigan Computers.
Michigan Computers.
Yeah. I accept a motion to approve twelve hundred and seventy dollars. Approves contract motion by Batterby.
Clark.
Or by Clark. Any other question? Pat, roll call please.
Batterby?
Yes.
Bodling?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Thayer?
Yes.
Cruzy?
Yes.
Tyler absent.
Thank you.
Cory, do you have a laptop or computer?
No, that's, that's, no, that's what we're doing right now. Initially, Cory gave me a quote that would be totaled out at six hundred nineteen ninety-eight. That's one that everybody looked at last month. It was an Anus, or Assus?
Asus.
Asus, okay. Notebook, Intel Core I3, for four hundred and seventy-nine ninety-nine, and a laser printer for one thirty-nine ninety-nine. I went back to Cory and Michigan Computers there and asked them to see if we could maybe do something a little cheaper, try to bring the cost down. He come back with a refurbished Dell Latitude D830 notebook with the Intel Core II Duo for three oh nine, shipping was twenty bucks, and a Samsung printer for ninety-nine dollars with a replacement toner cartridge for sixty-nine ninety-nine, totaled it out at four hundred ninety-nine ninety-seven. So them were our options, if we so choose.
I think they're both the same, are they comparable, I think?
Well, sort of, different generations of computers, and one's brand-new versus refurbished, so you always got that to worry about a little bit, but in order to keep costs down, we'll go to the older generation of processors. They'll both do exactly what they need to do. My reasoning for going with the better one would be the latter, perhaps.
They're only talking a hundred and twenty dollars more for the good one.
Well, on the good one, I didn't quote the replacement toner for it as well, so you can add, like, you probably have to add another seventy dollars for replacement toners. I didn't redo that quote, I was just asking something else.
And then your business plan?
Yeah. But of course, it's just more of a campground reservation system. If I'm wrong, I don't know a lot about computers, but we could go spend two thousand dollars on a better computer, yeah, but we need a computer that'll run the campground reservation system.
It's going to have a web browser, it'd be web capable. And I don't think there'd be any problem with either one of them. I'd say, honestly, I'd say save the money, go that route.
It'd be, it's kind of a test trial anyway. This first year.
Absolutely.
This first year's going to be a test.
I've been running, I'd be happy with it.
I think that one ought to be for five hundred dollars, yes.
That's one that's on the table right now, the four hundred ninety-nine ninety-seven.
I like a Dell. I'd love to review that.
Motion by... I just got that one, Cory. Motion by Clark, approve four ninety-nine ninety-seven for the purchase of a laptop or printer. Any support?
Support.
Support right there. Any other questions? Oh, no, roll call please, Pat.
Batterby?
Yes.
Bodling?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Thayer?
Yes.
Cruzy?
Yes.
Tyler absent.
Patrick?
Thank you.
If there's... I was going to say Cory, I'll get with Pat to get you up to date on this, so we can get that ordered up right away. Thank you.
How long does it take to get here? Do you think you have to order it?
Yeah.
As long as it's still available, like it was earlier. It'd be about three to five business days.
Okay, so it'll be here for about the same time Lyle wants it.
Yeah, and I want to have a little bit of time to set it up, and get it ready to go.
You look through Overstockers, somebody like that?
What's that?
You look through Overstockers.
No, I've got a couple different dealers I go through.
Do you have a public comment?
Again, I didn't get an answer about getting repaid for the porta-potties. Is somebody going to get back with me on that? I was going to ask if we could discuss that. Since there's no public classrooms, and the past village council members and presidents, two of them have said that it's the village's responsibility since there's no public classrooms. So if we want to discuss it, or whatever, I just, I do need to have an answer.
I'll make a motion, reverse it for the three hundred.
I'll support that, right.
By Clark. Any discussion? Feel about it, and support it.
Thank you. I will get the bill to Pat. Thayer?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Chapman?